Welcome to the Borough of Swissville Agenda Meeting for February 22, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:04 PM. The first item on our agenda is we wanted to invite some comments from State Representative Abigail Salisbury. So, Abigail, you can go ahead and have the floor.
Hi. So, I originally thought I was going to come to the council meeting tonight and resign and say some nice words and then get sworn in next week. But they changed our swearing-in day to yesterday, so I was sworn in yesterday morning. So, I had sent in a resignation letter so that I was fully resigned before I got sworn in as state rep. So, just wanted to not sort of ghost you and disappear without saying goodbye to council. But I'm not really saying goodbye. I still, of course, live here. I'm still happy to do anything that I can to help Borough, just in a different capacity now. So, I will be sending a memo to council that has contact information for all the projects that I've worked on, any information that you might need in order to come in touch with anyone about any of those things. I'm, of course, still just down the street and happy to talk to anybody about anything and answer any questions or help with anything at all. And I hope that you'll feel very free to use my office as a resource. I'm going to be taking over the existing state reps office down in Braddock, so it'll be the same location that it always was. I got the keys today, so I'll be able to get that open and we'll be hiring new staff. So, for anybody who's looking for a job in the area, feel free to look out and apply for those vacancies. But I just want to say thank you to everyone. It's been a wild five years. I started out as the new person on council and somehow ended up as the person who's been on the council the longest. And it looks like we'll have some new people joining council either, you know, to replace me. And then it sounds like maybe some new people over the course of the election that's coming up. So, I'm very excited to see how council evolves and I wish you all the best. And by all means, don't be a stranger. Feel free to ask me and my staff for anything at all that we can do for the Borough. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to serve on council. And I'm really grateful for everything that I learned and all the opportunities that I had working with all of you.
Thanks so much, Abigail. We just appreciate the work that you've put into this. I know that there are a number of those community initiatives that you have started and will be taking that baton on. I've already been scheduling meetings with Green Edge and Duquesne Light about electric EV chargers. We also want to present for you, to you, we have a, I don't know if Greg's video is kind of all over the place, but we've got a little plaque there, a service award in recognition of your five years on council and just want to express the gratitude that we have for that. So, thank you so much for your service and that time.
Thank you so very much. And like I said, don't be a stranger. Feel free. If you ever need anything, I'm always happy to help.
Thanks. And I know some other, it sounds, it looks like some other folks want to have some things they want to say too. Go ahead, Mayor Schwartz-Welder.
I just want to say thanks, Abigail. It was a pleasure working with you. And you've done some wonderful things for Swissville and I look forward to you doing even greater things for Swissville in your newly elected office. So, thank you and take care. Good luck and we will be talking soon.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Alfonso Wells.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of your dedication and your purpose in terms of doing this job. I know it's been, wow, it seems like just yesterday that, you know, we saw you walking in all tall and straight to the council seat. And we were just like, oh, how does she do that, you know? And it was just amazing and to see that you have moved on to an even higher office and that I know all of your energy and you have lots of it. I don't know where you get the energy from. But all of that energy is going to be dedicated to this area of Western Pennsylvania. But, you know, I know you won't forget us because you live really close and we can knock on your door at any time. And, you know, we wish you the best and that as you, you know, and as you go on, we know that you'll be thinking about us, that you'll never forget back here where all of us are and you will be missed. You really helped to form where we are now and you helped to lead some of the vision in terms of where we wanted to go. So, it's going to be rough, but we know you're still here. We know you're still here and, you know, you can always tune in anytime you want and to get that extra Swissville flavor.
Thank you.
Well, again, thank you so much. As this is, as everyone is probably aware, this creates a vacancy that I will address kind of what our process is going to be when I get to my remarks a little bit later in the meeting. So, once again, Ms. Salisbury, thank you so much for your hard work and we look forward to seeing what you do for our region and for the state in the coming years.
Absolutely. All right. I'm going to sign off, guys. Have a wonderful meeting and a wonderful rest of the year, honestly. And good luck to whoever is applying. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go to roll call. Ms. Alfonso Wells.
Present.
Mr. Meiser.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Ms. Scales.
Here.
Ms. Tribbling.
Present.
Mayor Schwartz-Welder.
Here.
All right, let's move on to our public comment. We have Mr. Gibb Miller on tonight. Mr. Miller, I apologize. I didn't get a memo of what you're speaking on. I assume it's Shade Tree, but if it's not, go, feel free to speak on whatever you were here to speak on.
No, that is the case. With the last couple of council meetings where you're going through, you know, new members of groups and councils and whatever. And I know you did make a note, say, it'd be nice to hear from them more often. So, this is just kind of catch up on some things that have been going on. A lot of it's, well, majority of it's been in the Swissvillian, so. But I'm going to start from the top. With Greg's help, we applied for the Tree City USA application again for the seventh year. Should hear something in a few months here. We had two separate tree vitalized plantings in '22, one in the spring, one in the fall. And beyond that, we were able to fulfill other residents' street tree requests with either additional trees we sourced from like Lowe's or Home Depot or from Tree Pittsburgh with tree giveaways. So, we're trying to come up with different ways that we can, if residents identify a need or want, we can try to fulfill it. Let's see. We had, I had been talking with Jake Malofsky from Tree Pittsburgh. They are apparently this year, this year through early next year, coordinating tree giveaways that are funded by Pittsburgh Penguins, Pirates, and I guess in also Davy Tree Service. So, so far, been able to connect Jake with Denise, who is with Naomi's House on Roslyn, about planting some trees in the lot beside her building. Also connected with Shannon Dickerson from Pollinator Garden. That she was looking for some trees, some pawpaw trees. So, I think Tree Pittsburgh should be able to hook her up on those. We had also worked with Seth Bush and the Climate Action Plan Committee to try to get a tree right up into the action plan or when eventually it's issued. And I guess the other thing that we're talking about doing, say in March or April, the committee's going to try to meet with residents on Woodstock Avenue to kind of give them an idea of what is involved and needed, you know, spaces for trees, et cetera. Because that's kind of like a dead stretch from radical, many blocks down Woodstock. So, if we can get some residents interested in putting trees in, then we can maybe get more from that. So, what we're trying to do is look for areas in the Borough, not just where residents are requesting trees, but where there are blank areas to try to see if we can start filling things in. But so, that's just a few things going on. Just wanted to let everybody know what we're trying to keep busy.
Yeah, thanks so much for that report and the hard work that the Shade Tree Committee does in beautifying. And I mean, that is helpful with clean air and climate action and all of those types of things. Just a side note that's related. I was talking to a resident last night who works in kind of the vocation of clean air areas. And she was commenting that I guess there's a pretty substantial pool of money that is available for grants that is, I guess, the fines for, you know, I don't know if they're EPA. I'm not sure who the fines come from, the county, but they get put in this pot. She did say it's a little bit more difficult to get a hold of that funds because you gotta, it's a kind of a roundabout way to apply for it. But it sounds like it can be used for anything that would improve air quality. And so, I don't know if that would be something that, whether it be the Shade Tree Committee or our, you know, Borough Manager could look into to see if we can even get some extra funding for some of the stuff you guys are trying to do.
Yeah, like if you can either give me some contact information or, you know, we can look into it and see what we do.
Great. Thanks. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Miller? Yes, Mayor Schwartz-Welder.
Not so much a question, but just a comment. I just want to thank Gibb and the Shade Tree Committee for all the work they do. I mean, they do fantastic things for our Borough that we don't recognize, you know, all the time. And they maintain these trees, they plant trees, they, they just enhance our Borough and make our jobs much easier because if they didn't do it, then it would be on us to do it. And, you know, I just want to say thanks for volunteering and putting so much time into beautifying our town. It makes a difference and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I'm sure all of council and Swissville appreciates you. And without you, we wouldn't have all these lovely trees around and clean air. So, thanks.
Glad to hear it. Everybody on the committee and on the team are interested in the same thing, so all good.
Yeah, we're lucky to have such a great, great Shade Tree Committee and all our committees. I mean, you know, we don't thank anybody enough for all the hard work and time they put into these committees that help Swissville flourish. So, thank you.
Great. Well, thanks so much for giving us some of your time and appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Let's move on to our agenda items. The first agenda item is I'm going to turn over to the DEI Committee and Ms. Scales. It's listed as presentation of plaques to outstanding members of the community and recognition of Black History Month. So, Ms. Scales, you've got the floor.
Thank you. So, we're going on our third year of recognizing our very own. So, roughly actually four years ago, Swissville made it an important note that Black History Month is something that will be recognized and celebrated eagerly in the month of February in the Borough of Swissville. Then the very next year, what we decided was, hey, let's recognize our own. We got some residents here who are embodying the essence of what Black History Month is. We have some black-owned businesses here that have been in Swissville for a very long time, which are contributors to our community and also embodying the essence and the spirit of what Black History Month means. And so, we also want to do this year to recognize our very own. I will allow Ms. Sean Alfonso Wells to, I see you're shaking your head. Are you not ready to go? Are you ready? Or do you want me to go first? And me and Bill go first, you go last?
Yeah, you two can go first and I'll sum it up and do one last. That's good.
Okay, perfect.
Forge the path, forge the path.
I will gladly go first. Okay. So, this year, we have decided to honor and recognize four individuals and businesses in the Borough of Swissville for Black History Month. It is my honor and a privilege to recognize Beasley Plumbing, who is owned and operated by Mr. Alexander Beasley. Beasley Plumbing was established in 2003 by Alexander Beasley Senior of Swissville, Pennsylvania. Mr. Beasley, as I like to refer to him as, is a registered master plumber in Allegheny County. And he has an extensive education and experience as a plumber with many reputable companies and decided it was time for him to start his own company. As a minority-owned business, Beasley Plumbing had a burden to ensure quality and affordable plumbing services to all while giving their customers the red carpet treatment. As Beasley Plumbing began to expand and the brand began to grow, the company decided in 2005 to transition from traditional white vans and establish our black and yellow theme to correlate with our B image as well as our city colors. We proudly say we are the original black and yellow plumbers of Pittsburgh. Beasley Plumbing was instrumental in setting the trend in Pittsburgh for plumbing companies to stretch beyond the basic loop. At Beasley Plumbing, our mission is to make a conscious decision to exceed mediocrity, make a positive contribution by impacting all of our customers and the industry through skilled technicians dedicated to precision aesthetic remodeling and a resolution of every project. Beasley Plumbing provides residential and small commercial service work throughout Allegheny County and surrounding areas. Throughout the years, we have partnered with numerous business projects and serviced thousands of customers while providing the highest level of quality service. So, when you are thinking of plumbing, make things easy and just call Beasley, where we take the sting out of your plumbing woes. We honor you and we acknowledge you for Black History Month in the Borough of Swissville. And I just want to say that him being able to also service commercial and residential is very big. That's something that me and Bill, real estate attorneys, understand that that is a very big accomplishment for Mr. Beasley to have for his business. Mr. Beasley, I want to open up the floor for you to share any sort of comments that you may have. Now, you're still muted. I'm going to ask your wife, Mrs. Beasley. Can you help him? There you go. You're muted now.
I'm good. Thank you. I'm sorry I was hitting the wrong button. But I just want to say thank you, first of all, all of council and to you, the Swissville Borough for having me and honoring me today. I appreciate the support and all the love that everybody has given me over the years. Really appreciate this past opportunity to work with Swissville Borough on one of their major projects that they had last year. And I'm grateful for everybody and I really look forward to doing what I can to help with anything that I can do as far as the growth of Swissville Borough. And just thank you very much in honor of Black History Month. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the opportunity, not only during Black History Month, but throughout the remaining portion of the year. And so, thank you so much and appreciate everybody and have a great day.
You are welcome. So, I am going to pass the mic to William Price, who is my fellow vice chair for the DEI Committee.
Our second award goes to Timothy Jones, who owns Salon Blue LLC. Salon Blue has been in Swissville for 15 years and Mr. Jones is a licensed cosmetologist, which he has been for over 20 years, and he's a recently certified, I hope I'm saying this correctly, trichologist. Tim also gives back to the community by providing haircuts twice a month at a group home for individuals who are intellectually disabled. From his years of experience from behind the chair and seeing different hair and scalp conditions and disorders, he believes that it is important to share and help build up the individuals in his industry to help them service their current clientele that may be experiencing trichology issues and to potentially increase their bottom line financially. He wants the other people in his industry to feel comfortable and confident in what they're seeing in their clients' hair and scalp when they're sitting in their chairs. And he wants these other professionals to understand how to treat them and to refer them to a proper specialist when necessary. Tim says that he wants to help change and improve lives one scalp at a time. So, congratulations, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much, Bill. I appreciate that. I would just like to say, Mrs. Al, I was really shocked to be nominated and then selected. So, I just want to say thank you. Can you guys hear me?
We can. But I'm just admiring your fashion today, so sorry.
I'm just finishing up with work. I was told to be here at 7:00, so, but thank you.
Angela, you have your hand raised.
I am just so ecstatic for this guy. He's actually my hairstylist and I couldn't think of a better person in the community to have this honor along with the other honorees. He is truly a master at what he does and he does it, he's not only about hairstyling, he's about hair care and actually how to take what is going on with your hair and kind of contrast that with your health. So, he is definitely a wealth of information. I highly suggest anybody who's interested in learning more of what he does to seek him out because I'm a fan. So, thank you so much, Tim. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Angie.
Yeah, thanks so much. And just so you know, since you're on your phone, that awkward silence after you said, you know, had something to say. We were all silently applauding you. You probably couldn't see it, but that's what we were doing.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope I pronounced trichologist correctly.
Perfectly, perfectly.
Do you want to explain what a trichologist is?
So, we're a paramedical professional dermatology. We study, we do a medical study of hair and scalp. Hair diseases and scalp diseases and disorders like hair shaft disorders, like certain breakages that you may, they may be genetic or acquired breakages and certain scalp conditions like psoriasis, seborrheic dermatitis, different alopecia and things like that. Very useful, very useful information.
Well, congratulations and you are very much deserving of this award. And I'm so admiring your fashion this evening.
Thank you very much, Woldy.
Okay, I will pass the mic now to Ms. Sean Alfonso Wells.
Hello, hello, hello. Well, thank you very much. I would like to say that today we are also honoring, again, one of our very own, Ms. Summer Lee, who has broken records in politics here in Western Pennsylvania over and over and over again. She is just amazing. So, one of the things about Ms. Lee, if you didn't already know, she was raised here in North Braddock. She attended Woodland Hills High School, so she truly is one of her own that came from these very streets and made it in a big world that sometimes overlooks people who look like her. She graduated from Pennsylvania State University and then got her, what do you say, JD, JD? Her law degree from Howard University. She then campaigned with Bernie Sanders in 2016 and then decided to run eventually for her first position here in our house of, in the 12th, I think it's the 12th district, 12th district, right? 17, 17, 17. You get confused with them because she's done both positions. So, she ran at the time that she ran the first time. It was historic. She did it without much support from the higher ups, but she had a lot of grassroots supports from her community, from all the people around here. I have, I have yet to step outside of my house and not encounter support for Summer Lee, not only here, but in the larger Pittsburgh area. So, she has quite a following. Once she did that, she, which was historic, by the way, we honored her the last time for that historic moment where she was the first African-American female to be in that position. So, she broke through or at least cracked a glass ceiling. And then, not only did she crack it, she took that sledgehammer and went bam, broke it, came through once again, and now she is our Congresswoman. I mean, hey! You can't get better than that, right? I mean, just amazing and historic. And she comes from right here where we all are. These are the types of expectations that we want for our kids. These are the types of dreams and hopes that our kids have and now they can see them realized. The fact that she is the first black Congresswoman in Pennsylvania as a whole. I mean, wow, she's just amazing. And now she has a seat at the table, which means we all have a seat at the table. She's not there by herself. And so, we are extremely proud to be able to once again recognize Summer Lee. Now, now she's doing this. In another two years, don't tell me she becomes president, right? Because then I'm going to sit here and I'm going to, you know, fall out on the floor. I'll be like, ah! We called it here first. Okay, now maybe she has a bigger field for that particular spot. But I see that there is no limit. She's already broken half the ceilings. You know, that house has crumbled down and she is going through and the rest of us are following. So, we are very proud to give this award to, once again, our very own because she's showing us that you can aim for the stars and, you know, reach the galaxies. We're very, very proud of our very own Summer Lee. And, you know, hopefully, there are other people out there that we can acknowledge too. But you cannot, in this historic year, let our very own Summer Lee, you know, not let her know that we are so proud of her and we're so glad to give her this award. She wasn't able to make it here tonight, unfortunately, but because she's doing a people's business, that's fine. We will knock on her door later and give it, not tonight, not tonight. So, anybody listening, we are not going to her house tonight to give her the plaque, but we will later on present it to her. So, thank you very much, Summer Lee, for showing us that we can achieve our goals. Now, I will pass the baton right back to Ms. Scales.
I couldn't have done a better job than that. I wasn't expecting that, Sean. So, I want to thank all of our honorees for showing up this evening as well as Mr. Beasley's wife, Dr. Beasley. It is truly an honor and it is a privilege for us to honor you. We encourage you to continue to good work. We encourage you to continue to give back to the community and build up our community because the work that you do truly makes a difference within our community. because the work that you do truly makes a difference within our community. Thank you very much. Sadly, this is my last year of being the host and the moderator and the seeker of our Swissville honorees, but there's so much pride in Swissville and there's so many others that I'm very much confident that for the years to come, we will be able to continue to do this. And I'm going to let all of you know, this matters. It truly matters. It makes a difference in the lives of the individuals who are doing this work, but it makes a significant difference in our community. It sets the tone, it sets the standard and it uplifts and encourages the continued work that we desperately need. So thank you all. That is all I have to share. Bill, do you have anything that you want to share in closing?
Just that I'm very proud to have been a part of this committee and think that it is accomplished in its short time. And I think we're establishing a legacy for future councils.
Thank you all. And that is, oh, there's one final note. We will be honoring a Woodland Hills Rising Star as well. That is more to come. But that is the close of our Black History Month celebration and recognition. Fellow honorees, if you guys want to stay on for the rest of our very much interesting council meeting, you can, but you were excused. We do have plaques for you. Greg's video is not working very well. Oh, okay. He's holding them up. We have plaques for you. Now what we do on councils, we actually hand deliver these to you. So what's going to take place is we're going to have to schedule based upon your schedule and our schedule, when is best suited. Bill, I'm pretty sure you can easily deliver yours to Salon Blue. And I could probably easily deliver mine to Beasley as well because he's right across the street from my church.
Well, I will hunt down the Summer Lee in the nicest possible way. I don't want, I don't want anyone to take that in any kind of, kind of way. I'll get to her in a, you know, in a scheduled way and we'll all take pictures with you, hand you the plaque to show you how much we appreciate you, which is why we hand deliver so that you know in Swissville, we are part of the people, we hand deliver our stuff.
And congratulations to Mr. Beasley. I've always enjoyed talking with him. He's a very warm person.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate you very much and I always enjoy coming to your office and looking over all the history that you have in store there. Thank you to council as well. Thank you, Mr. Bachi also. I see you in the meeting. It was a pleasure to work with you. We were the best during that project and thank you so much again for Ms. Gels for calling me and recognizing and nominating me. I just want to thank you very much to you and all of council. Thank you.
Great. Thank you to all the recipients. Thank you to the DEI committee for putting that together. We're going to move on with our agenda to Agenda Item B, which is discuss renewal of contract with Sable Kennels. So I don't know if Mr. Bachi or Chief Watson wants to introduce this.
I can take care of it. If my video starts acting up and it's bothering and distracting, just tell me I'll shut it off. So the Sable Kennels contract is due for renewal. It actually expired at the end of January. There are very few businesses to provide these services anymore, not really having any issues with Sable. And they've requested two, two changes in the contract. One is to increase their monthly fee from a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars because their costs have gone up tremendously and that's pretty much unlimited dog removal for that cost. And then the other is if they get canceled after they've been dispatched and are en route, they want the ability to charge for that, which seems reasonable to me because they said they, on a few occasions, they've almost been to the borough building or to the location where they were supposed to pick up the dog. And, you know, the dog left or the police were able to catch the dog and then they have to head back home and, you know, don't get any compensation for that. But that's the only two things they're asking. I did talk to Chief Watson about it. He had no issues with the service at this time, you know, they are doing a pretty good job, which in itself, you know, in the past, dog catchers have been an issue. And I shouldn't say dog catchers, animal control officers have been an issue finding good ones. And, you know, they've been, they've been reasonably good to work with. I did ask Mr. McTernan to review the contract and if he has any concerns with it, there is a thirty day out clause. So if we do, if we are not happy with the service, we can, we could terminate them with thirty days notice.
Any questions or discussion around this item?
I think Mr. McTernan wanted this.
Okay, go ahead.
I agree that it's the same contract we've had and the thirty day cancellation does give both parties a lot of flexibility. You're not satisfied with the service.
You said they were animal control. Do they, they do, what, what, what animals do they do? So if there's like a raccoon or a snake or a bat or, you know, some weird badger that may have, you know, what is it, rabies? Do they come and get those or do they only do a specific type of animal?
They are primarily dogs and dead animals. So if there's dead animals in your, in, on the, on the public rights away or in people's yards, that's part of the contract also. We have not in the past couple of years used, exercised that part of the contract. Our Public Works Department typically picks up the dead animals off the roads or even out of people's yards to the system. So the only thing that, you know, the main thing we use them for is, is dog control.
Does, so do they usually do like big animals that are dead? Otherwise Public Works comes or, and, and for the, I mean, I've seen a couple of dead squirrels just stay in the road for a long, long time, just disintegrating. Are we supposed to call for that? I didn't know we were supposed to call to get them picked up.
You can, you know, we, you know, if somebody notifies us, you know, that, you know, we will come pick it up. But, you know, that's something like you said, Public Works typically has done in the past rather than paying for them to come. That's not included as part, as part of their monthly fee. There's enough charge for that. So, you know, but they'll, they'll come out, get anything. They'll get deer, they'll get dead dogs, cats, squirrels, raccoons, whatever.
They have to be called by you, right? It's not like a citizen just calls them and say, hey.
Correct. Borough official, anybody, the admin staff or police can, can call them. But like I said, we typically have Public Works remove it. Because if even, even deer, you know, we just take the backhoe, pick up in the front pocket of the backhoe and then throw it and put it in one of our dumpsters.
Exciting.
Very graphic to think about.
On the flip side, I will say if you see a deer that is not dead but is possibly injured and can use help, you know, there are options through the game commission and some other services that can deal with that. There are limited options, but they can, they can deal with that. So.
Right.
Oh, that was a nice euphemism for the limited options that would be available for the injured animal that wouldn't be put back into the wild.
Not going to try to sugarcoat it, sorry.
Additional questions or discussion around this item? All right, let's move on to Item C, discuss ratification of the part-time police contract.
The police, we, we had three negotiating sessions with the part-time police officers and the, the biggest thing, biggest issue is wages. The, and it's more of an issue, it's just as much of an issue for us as us being the borough as it is for the officers because the, if we want to be competitive and attract part-time police officers, we need to increase the wages. And last year council had given me some parameters to work within based upon, you know, some dollar amounts. And I did negotiate with the part-timers and we came to an agreement on, on a tentative agreement of increasing the wage from eighteen seventy-five an hour to twenty-two dollars an hour for twenty twenty-three. There'd be, I'm just going to shut this off. There'd be no wage increase. It would be a five-year contract that would go from twenty twenty-two through twenty-six so that it's the same length as the full-time contract. But there'd be no wage increase for twenty twenty-two because we, you know, we were negotiating during that year and they were okay with that because we're jumping it up to twenty-two dollars an hour in twenty-three. And then it'll be three percent per year after that, topping out at twenty-four oh four in twenty twenty-six. There were three pay steps in this, in the old contract. So if you were, if you worked for zero to two years, you would get one step from two to ten years, you got a higher raise, higher rate. And from ten years and above as a part-timer, you would get an even higher rate. There was only one person that was, that was in the third step and that person volunteered to forego their higher salary in order to bring up the others. So we're, so we're just proposing one, one wage across the board as is in the full-time contract. The other, the other things are an increase in the uniform allowance of twenty-five dollars a year in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five. The addition of two holidays, Martin Luther King Day and Juneteenth, which is consistent with the full-time contract and with all other borough employees. The meal and parking allowance for court appearance was changed from a maximum of twenty-five dollars to a maximum of ten dollars for food plus their actual parking costs. That's also consistent with the full-time contract. And then the, the only major change is the detail time. They asked it to be restored to time and a half for, for any details worked, even whether it's forty hours a week or not. In talking to Mr., whether they've already worked forty hours and talking to Mr. McTernan about it, there's not, there's no prohibition in doing that. The only risk you run is if they work over forty hours in a week, then you, you have to recalculate their overtime rate based upon the average hourly rate they made for the week. This is something that happens, will happen very, very few and far between because we have very few part-timers and most of them are supplementing their income working here as this is their second job rather than, you know, five years ago, they were fresh out of the police academy, they would work forty, fifty, sixty hours a week because this was their only job or they worked two part-time jobs. That's not the case anymore as we've been talking about with the police regionalization. You know, we have a hard time getting police officers. This is something that hopefully will make them want to come here, a little extra incentive to stay here. So, you know, right now it's all about trying to keep part-timers and get part-timers. So, you know, there's, we did put some things in there to help, you know, to try to help attract people to come to, to work for us. And those, that's all the changes in, in that contract.
Go ahead.
Just one additional thing is the, there's only three part-timers right now and those three have already agreed to this. So it's just, it's up to council now if you wish to ratify it.
Any questions or discussion around this item?
Okay. Sorry, it took me a second to get my, my little thing keeps disappearing. Anyway, the, the clothing allowance, the uniform allowance, that was twenty-five dollars in addition to something because you can't get a piece of uniform for twenty-five dollars, right?
It's twenty-five dollar increase. It's three hundred fifty now, so go to three seventy-five this year and four hundred in twenty twenty-five.
Yes, because I would like our officers to be fully dressed and not to be, you know, just on a twenty-five dollar allowance. Like, oh, what are they wearing today? I only had twenty-five dollars. I could only get the buttons today. So, yeah, okay, that's good.
Good question. All right, here nothing else. Let's move on to Item D, discuss scheduling a public hearing for a conditional use request.
We have a conditional use request from a company called Top Tier Venues. They want to open a location at seventeen oh three Monongahela Avenue to operate a banquet facility and event venue. We can't get real into the details right now because we haven't heard the testimony of the applicant yet. The planning commission meeting is tomorrow at six PM. So if anybody wants to join in, you know, let me know and I'll send you the Zoom link. But the, the meeting's tomorrow, so we can't really discuss the details of it. But I would like to go ahead and schedule the public hearing on the conditional use request at this time because if we don't, then the next time we can have this is at the end of April. And I don't, you know, I don't, I don't think it's really fair to them to, to make them wait almost sixty days or more than sixty days. So I propose that we hold the public hearing at six thirty PM on March twenty-second and which, you know, we'll, we'll talk about later why it's March twenty-second. Anybody have any objections to that?
No, I just said, so I guess we'll hear more about what they are later. I mean, aside from a catering.
Well, yeah, you'll hear about it at the public hearing because that, that's where they will, that's where they present their testimony to you as to why they feel they meet the criteria of the conditional use and should be granted.
And that's, and that's when?
Well, my proposal is March twenty-second at six thirty PM. Planning commission meeting is tomorrow at six PM. If you'd like to, if anybody wants to join in, let me know. I'll send you the Zoom link.
If I could just mention this to Bachi, essentially with a conditional use hearing, council was acting in a quasi judicial capacity to determine whether the applicant meets the terms of the conditional use provisions of the ordinance. So it's as Mr. Bachi was saying, important to wait to hear the testimony and, and you've had a chance to gather information at the actual hearing.
Great. Well, I'm not hearing any, any opposition, so let's schedule that for March twenty-second at six thirty. Okay, we don't, we don't have to take a vote or anything next week about that, correct?
No. So, yeah, this doesn't need to be an agenda item. Does not.
Okay, great. Let's keep moving. Item E, discuss biennial approval to promulgate emergency operations plan for emergency management. Chief Wilhelm, would this be you or is this Mr. Bachi?
I'll defer to Mr. Wilhelm on this.
Good evening. This is a, this is something that we're required to do by PMA, Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, as well as the Department of Homeland Security. It is, it's not a public document. If anybody would like to review it, they're welcome to come here. We can show you a copy. We can't scan it and email out because it's controlled under federal and state law. But it basically is a emergency operations plan where we determine what possible catastrophes or major events could occur in the borough such as natural disasters and human events and a brief overview of the plan, not in real detail, but a broad overview of what our resources would be and what we would be required to do. So these are things like a severe weather event, you know, whether it be a winter storm or, you know, a summer storm, thunderstorms, winds, microbursts, tornado. And of course, man-made events like a train derailment, a major hazardous materials incident or civil unrest, things like that. There's been no changes from the previous revision, but nonetheless, we have to re-promuligate it biennially. So this is something the county had asked that we get taken care of because we're required to submit a copy signed by myself and the council president and the manager to submit to the county and they're required to keep those. And they're the custodians of them, if you will, and we're all required to send them up. This also is a relevant factor in us being eligible for hazard mitigation funds and other FEMA funds during natural disasters. If we don't prom, re-promuligate our plan every two years, we're not eligible for federal funding should a disaster occur.
Go ahead, Ms. Alfonso Wells.
That sounds just dandy and exciting.
It's pretty dry, actually.
But, yeah, I think that, you know, it would, I, I definitely want to try and stop by and see what our plan is for train derailment since we know those are like top of the mind at the moment. And I know my house is definitely within whatever the one mile radius of evacuation would be. Do we perhaps, and I, I don't know if this is a secret or anything, but do we have a, a location where residents are able to go? If there was, you know, such as a train derailment and they would have to, it wouldn't be allowed back into their homes because we'd be evacuated, where would we go?
Well, there, there's a whole host of different things and that's all subjective. It depends on how much area we need to evacuate, what the type of emergency is, whether it's gaseous, whether it's fire, whether it's liquids. So there's a whole host of, there's a broad spectrum that you can't plan and plan for and articulate every possible scenario. But that's why we go to training. That's why we're certified emergency management officials through the Commonwealth, myself and the two deputies that we have. And we rely a lot, we're very unique in the sense that Allegheny County being a second-class county in a metropolis, if you will, we have great resources through the county. The county actually has full-time staff that are dedicated to emergency management. So once our resources are exhausted here locally, their job is to then support us with everything else that we need. And we're, we're blessed in that, in that manner because a lot of the surrounding companies don't have that detailed of an emergency management agency as we do here in Allegheny County. So it's, it's a little different here than sixty-five other counties across the state that really are on their own and we have a great partnership. that really are on their own and we have a great partnership through Allegheny County and also another agency. It's a PMA agency called Region 13. It's 13 counties that were grouped together and it was started by our former emergency services director from years past Bob Fool that pulled all of our resources together so that we have a shared arrangement that we all can help each other through a disaster. So we have a great amount of resources.
I feel a little I, I less anxiety maybe, I'm not sure. But it's nice to know that there at least that, um, depending on the circumstance, uh, we have places, I'm assuming that you would, uh, direct us to.
Yeah, in a situation such as like what happened in East Palestine, um, we would, uh, we would be evacuating six municipalities. So we would be going far, far away. We would be counting on emergency management agencies and other municipalities to activate their shelter so that we can use them. Because it would be beyond the scope of our municipal government.
Alrighty. Well, thank you for being on the job and reading all of that and making sure that we're safe. I appreciate it. Um, because I know it takes a lot and we've just seen, uh, that good emergency management is a must. And so we know that we have the best team, um, available, uh, to make sure that we're all safe. So, uh, thank you, um, for having this, um, under your belt and for, uh, getting ready to, uh, plan. Um, again, so that we can have an, an emergency management plan in place. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just as, just to, uh, repeat what Chief Wilhelm said is this is not a public document, so it can't be disseminated to us electronically. So if you would like to see what's in it before you vote on it, you can stop by the fire station, uh, and they will let you see a copy of it.
And just to verify, in, in case there's anybody from the public watching, is, is is that a document where a member of the public could come into the station and ask to see it or is it just for?
It is not. It is actually exempt from the right to know and it's a controlled document by federal law.
Great. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clarified so you didn't have anyone coming to try and view it. Thanks.
And I'll be honest with you, it's not a very, when you see it, you'll be disappointed. Um, but it's, it's a template and it's a cookie cutter plan. We have other operation plans and standard operating guidelines based on specific calls that also come into play. But that actual overall plan is just, uh, it's a formality that we're required to do to be eligible for federally.
Would you say, um, that everybody should probably have, um, an emergency meetup plan, um, for their family? Uh, in case anything, I mean, just, I mean, just as the general good rule, right? So if something's happening, here's our emergency meetup place.
Yes, that, that is a good idea. Um, you know, you should always have a way to contact and, and have accountability with your family members so that you can be able to reach each other to know where to go. Um, it's difficult to have a meetup plan in something of different, you know, there's so many varying magnitudes. And we can have a train derailment where we have to, uh, you know, evacuate 250 feet, 500 feet or a mile. Um, so you know, it's hard to say we'll meet at Dixon School because that might be within that zone, right? Even the waterfront. I mean, if we had, if we had something like what happened in East Palestine here, it would go all the way across the river to Mon Hall, Whittaker, Homestead, West Homestead, the city of Pittsburgh, Edgewood, Braddock Hills, Forest Hill, North Braddock, Rankin, Braddock, they'd all be evacuated. So it's a, it's a pretty significant thing. And I'm just giving that comparison because I know that's on the forefront of everybody's mind with what happened. And believe me, um, that is the one thing that we always hope never happens. And, uh, you know, we have to do the best we can to be prepared for it in the best manner that we can. But that, that, that's every fire chief, emergency management agency, elected official mayor, that's everyone's nightmare. And, uh, we hope that it never happens. But we have to prepare for it.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Chief Wilhelm, for your work in this. Um, and so this will be an agenda item for next week. All right, our last agenda item, um, for the night is item F, discuss possibility of returning to in-person meetings. Um, I wanted to have this as an agenda item for discussion. I know that Mr. Price, uh, a couple of months ago had said, hey, now that we, we've got a location for, uh, our kind of, uh, temporary build, borough building up at the, uh, Evan Street, um, Woodland Hills School District Building, uh, would it be worthwhile for us to look about acquiring a classroom for in-person meetings? Uh, and you know, I know Mr. Bachi and I have talked about it, scoped out some spaces, um, and I know that probably people have different opinions on the desire to go back, um, in public, uh, go back to in-person meetings or not. And so I just wanted to open that up to see if we had some degree of consensus of what we desired to do. Um, I, you know, Mr. McTernan, if you could correct me on this, but we have been operating on Zoom uh, because we were under emergency, some type of emergency, uh, what, what was the language for this?
Well, it, it for that, that's exactly the right, the, the correct language. It was an emergency, uh, resolution of council. Uh, and it was due primarily to the absence of adequate or appropriate meeting space in the borough after the collapse of the council chambers. And this bind at the time with the health crisis, but since then, of course, the, the, the absence of a appropriate or adequate meeting place for not just the council, but for the public was the primary, uh, reason.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say is that it, it initially was with COVID as well. But once, um, a lot of other municipalities were able to go back to in-person meetings, we continued on Zoom because of a lack of council chambers. Um, and so now that we have a site to use, I wanted to kind of open this up to the floor for council to have some conversation around it. So I'll, I'll be quiet, Mr. Mizer. I see your hands up. Go ahead and jump in.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it brief. I, I'm fully in favor of returning to in-person meetings. The only thing I'd, I'd want to ask about. And I'm sure this will be taken into consideration is, um, I know there were some concerns about having the school open to the public. Uh, as, as it's operating as the borough office, just because it's very hard to restrict access to certain parts of the school. I, you know, would we, would we have a plan in allowing the public in for meetings to keep everyone in certain areas of the school and not let people get into other areas of the school?
If we go back to, if we go, if we decide to go back to the in-person meetings, I mean, we'll come up with a, with a way to restrict the access, whether it's through a staff member in hallways, a police officer in the hallways or physical restrictions, um, you know, to block areas, uh, you know, we'll do whatever we need to do. Um, to make it safe for everybody, you know, we have to, we have to keep in mind too, you know, we can't make too many physical barriers because then there's fire code issues, um, you know, because you lose your secondary accesses. Um, but you know, we'll, we'll come up with, with the plan.
Ms. Alfonso Wells.
Yes, I am only in favor if, if there is adequate ventilation and adequate spacing. So I'm not going into some small little classroom with, with no access to air coming in, no air purification. And all y'all are sitting up there coughing around me looking like, no. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't feel comfortable unless there's enough airflow going in. And you know, if you're sitting up there and you're just gonna open a classroom door and there's no outside air, there's no air purification. You're in a small classroom and anybody can just roll up in there and cough around me and there's no spacing between anybody, then I'm not in favor of that.
Ms. Tribbling.
Yes, I kind of second what Sean is saying as well. Will there be enough room as well for people to move around safely and adequately in the event that there was an emergency? Will we be able to safely get out in case something happens, um, being, I don't know how close quarters it would be. Um, again, I'm still not really comfortable, you know what I mean? I can be around people, but I don't know how comfortable I'd be every meeting. Maybe we can do something every quarter. Perhaps just to start to get ourselves back into the flow of, um, going to in-person meetings. But again, like Sean, I do agree that, um, unless there's a correct ventilation, unless your safety parameters to be able to have a get out, I mean, the world is different since COVID. And you know, we as females definitely want to make sure that we're safe to get in and out. Any event, because every situation, we might not have a decision that sits well with people. So we just, those are the concerns and the thoughts that I have.
Um, those are some good thoughts. I mean, I, I'll just say, and Mr. Bachi, you can correct me because you've been around the space more than, than I have. But I would say that the, the classroom that we were looking at, um, a couple of factors about it, it is close to the entrance, so it's not like people be walking all over the school, um, to get to it. Um, I would say the size of it, uh, it's a little bit more square, but I would say it's probably about 60% the size of our previous council chambers. Does that seem like a?
Yeah, that's good.
Estimation. I mean, but you have to remember, there was a lot of like unused dead space in the, the previous council chambers. There is, uh, actually something our old council chambers did not have is there is a root of egress that we could use as council if we wanted to, um, you know, collaborate for executive session or something like that after the fact. Um, so I, I do think that there are, um, given what our attendance has been in the past. I, I'm not super concerned about there, uh, uh, of being too tight, um, in close proximity with one another. Uh, Mr. McTernan, you know, uh, Ms. Tribbling raised the question of, you know, could we try this quarterly? I, I don't know what that would do because if we go back to in-person, does that, uh, invalidate our emergency situation? And then, you know, to, like, do we need to make a decision and kind of stick with it? What are our options with that?
Well, of course, anything that would develop to create an emergency or renew the emergency, you could always look at it again. But, you know, the law requires the in-person meetings unless you have an exception, an emergency or a justification. So I don't, I, I think you, you either find that the in-person meetings are required by law or the situation is so dire and the emergency continues that you can't have them. It's not a question of compromise or discretion. So, I mean, that's my thought on it.
Those, those thoughts are helpful. Thank you. Um. So, Mr. Bachi, I guess a couple of questions that I've heard raised tonight, um, Mr. Mizer brought up about the security issue. I think that's something we need to, to kind of work through. I know Chief Watson will be at the meetings, but I, you know, something you and I, a conversation you and I had earlier is can we have an officer on kind of, not patrol, but just kind of out in the hallways, making sure people know where the room is and aren't wandering through, um, that school. Uh, I know Ms. Alfonso Wells and Ms. Tribbling brought up, um, issues of, excuse me, of, um, of that, uh, uh, of, uh, airflow. So I don't know if we could even purchase a couple of those purifiers that you have at like your dentist office, something like that that we can set up in the room to ensure that there is air movement and purification going on, um, to, to, um, you know, alleviate some of those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, the, the rooms do have windows, so I mean, you can open the windows to get fresh air in. Uh, you know, the, the day like tomorrow would be great. It's gonna be 72 degrees. Uh, day like Friday, it's gonna be 30. Um, so it's not, not the best. Um, the air handling, they do not have a sophisticated air handling and air exchange system in there. You know, it's basically a forced air HVAC system, um, that blows air into the classroom. There are some cold air returns where air passively goes back up into the, into the, um, return vents. But there's no, like in the new borough building, uh, the design is show, you know, they're showing, you know, like they do in all new commercial buildings, air exchange system. So you know, it actually changes the air, you know, exchanges the air every certain, you know, whether it's every minute, every three minutes, every five minutes. That building doesn't have it. I mean, it was built 45 years ago. Um, the, those types of systems weren't, um, weren't big back then, especially for school buildings. They were just, you know, unsophisticated forced air systems. So, you know, to address Sean's comment about that, um, that, that doesn't exist in, in any room in that building. You know, so whether it's the largest room or the smallest room, you're not going to have that. So like, like Mr. Ansel said, you know, possibly buy some air purifiers that, you know, there's, there's things we could try to do, but, uh, the building itself is not set up for that.
Right, so there's no modification that had, because of the age of the building or whatever. Um, since the pandemic, of course, there's no modification that's been made on that building because no children were in that building. Nobody was in the building because the building was closed. Right, so there was nothing that was done to, you know, to mitigate what we understand is that you need to have fresh air and an exchange of air so that you don't get sick, right? So that, none of that is in place, right?
To my knowledge, no. Yeah, there's been no modifications to the, to anything in the building since COVID because they shut down, um, in March of 20, March of 2020, when Governor Wolf ordered all the schools closed and they never reopened.
Just because they relocated to Dixon.
They relocated.
For the record, it's not that the school shut down and, uh, uh, didn't open, but there was.
Right, yeah, everything was relocated to Dixon, that's the, when children returned that fall, so.
Right, but any modifications that would have been made to airflow were made to Dixon and all the other schools that children were in, not in the schools that nobody else was then. Nothing has been done there, no type of new exchanges or anything. And I'm, I'm just saying, right? So we know what you need in order to be safe and that's not what that building has, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, but I mean, are, are there other options we can use like using window or using air purifiers to, um, I mean, actively take pathogens out of the air, um, even in space that might have some recycled air? I mean, does, is that, I mean, that's a lot of other places have that, that, you know, weren't able to retrofit everything have uh, relied a lot on other technology to, to implement, um, to make that happen.
Yeah, that's something we could certainly investigate, you know, what we can do to, to make that, to try to make that, um, you know, meet the, the standard that we're talking about. Um, physically, I mean, we can't make changes to the HVAC system in there. Um, nor would we want to, for this temporary location, that would be quite expensive, but we can see if there's, um, if there are devices that we could purchase that would, that would assist in that.
Ms. Scales or Mr. Price, uh, do either of you want to weigh in on, on this?
Uh, I, I like the idea of being able to return to meeting in person because uh, I, I want to get a feel of, uh, feedback from the public and it's very hard to do that in our present format to know what people are thinking and how they're feeling. I was pleasantly surprised when I went up to the building about a week ago for a, a three-hour meeting with the architects. It, it, it actually is set up nice up there. We're not talking some dingy old closed structure, you know. It was a nice modern school, uh, when, uh, when, uh, the school district closed it. But I, 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 I completely understand that we want to be smart and COVID safe too, so.
And it's a hundred times better than what we were in, so we're, we're thankful for the new location, the temporary location.
It was surprisingly pleasant up there.
Ms. Scales, do you have anything you'd like to add about returning to in-person?
Uh, I think you guys have said it all. There's, there's nothing for me to add, you know, it is unfortunate that, you know, the conditions of our building have, have led us to, to be entirely remote. And of course, there's this whole, you know, pandemic that hit out of nowhere. Um, but I would, if we can sort out some of the things that Sean has definitely made apparently um, necessary so that everybody can be safe. I, I would love to see my residents. Unfortunately, I've had this, I've, I've had to serve four years primarily virtually and, and not be able to en- engage with them physically. For, for their safety and mine's. So safety is at the top of the list. And I know something's going on right now, uh, with stomach viruses and stuff. Uh, so safety's, safety's at the top of the list.
Ms. Tribbling, go ahead.
How many people do you feel safely in, you know, in a space, would that space be able to hold comfortably?
Good question, um. You know, there, the building code has occupancy limits for, you know, for areas based upon whether it's standing or sitting. And, you know, it's basically one per person, one per every 15 square feet for, if, if people are seated. So we can measure the room and see what that yields. And, you know, maybe we limit, you know, I, I, see, that's a problem too, is you, you say, well, okay, we're limited to 30 people in this room. And you have, what, what are we online tonight? Uh, there's 14 of us, plus when we get another council member, there's 15. So if we limit it to 30 now, we're at, so half the, half the people are there. What if you get 20 people want to come to a meeting? Now we're stopping the public, you know, we're preventing them from coming to a meeting, which you know, that's, um, you know, we can still broadcast it via Zoom, but where does that put us, you know, is there, I'm Mr. McTernan, are there any issues like with that, that if you go pub, public and telling people, oh, sorry, there's too many people in the room? You muted, Bob.
I'm sorry, that came up from time to time even before COVID, when you'd have a very large crowd and you weren't able to fit everybody in. I mean, the, if it's open to the public, you have to find a reasonable way of allowing people to participate or at least to listen and hear what's going on. So, you know, that could be problematic if you can't get, uh, uh, people into the room safely. You might need to go for a larger space or augment your meeting with some type of, of loudspeaker system or something like that. Yeah, but you just can't say we have enough people, we're closing the doors.
Right.
Numbers of the public are out, uh, that, uh, the statute doesn't seem to account for that.
And the occupancy would be ba, would, would not have been based on a plague occupancy, right? It's not based on a COVID occupancy. It's the occupancy of how many people could safely get out of the room during like a fire or something. This was a pre-COVID occupancy type of thing, correct?
Which, yeah, it's under the building code. It has nothing to do with COVID.
Right.
Go ahead, Josh.
So I think, you know, I think there's things that we can look into, to trying to ensure the best air quality, the best spacing. You know, is, is this maybe something we, you know, I, I hate kicking the can down the road, but the, it, it at least is rumored that the Public Health Emergency is slated to end in May of this year, May eleventh.
Correct.
So do we maybe want to look at saying this summer, once we've seen that everything, you know, as long as there's no unforeseen surges, variants, whatever it may be, that once that declaration has lifted, that we would look to kind of make that the date that we would resume in-person meetings? I, I know, I know when that declaration ends, COVID doesn't just poof and it's, it's never gonna be here again. But at least kind of using that as a benchmark for us to look into what we need to do between now and then to have adequate protocols in place for safety and, and clean air and things along those lines. Just a thought, I mean, I'm, you know, I, I'm open to going back to in-person whenever, but I also want to be sensitive to others' concerns.
I mean, I think that seems very reasonable, and that's about three months. It'd be the agenda meeting for May that we would potentially do that. And that would give some time to figure some of the, some of the things I've heard. So we talked about safety in terms of, uh, public in the building. We've talked about, uh, safety in terms of, um, air circulation, et cetera. Um, another issue that did not come up tonight that we need to, because we will, we'll continue streaming the meeting, uh, is to make sure we have adequate, um, sound amplification. Because I know that in the police regionalization meeting, that was in talking to our IT person, that was one of the concerns that was raised, is that uh, there wasn't great, uh, we need to figure some kind of microphone system so that everybody can hear what's going on. Um, so those are some things that need to be ironed out as well, and May would give us some time to do that. Go ahead, Mr. Price.
Yeah, two things. First, I would encourage all the council members to try to get up to Evan Street in the next week before the next meeting, just to see what the facilities look like and get a feel for what is being proposed. And, um, the other thing is that, uh, it, it's possible that in this new age of Zooms, um, that much of the public, if we are to meet in person, much of the public may continue to watch us from home. We may not get the crowds that used to show up at council meetings pre-COVID. So that might take some pressure off of the occupancy of the room.
It's a good point, and, and I appreciate your, your comment to suggest to, to go visit. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Bach should be happy to show the space that he had thought would work. And just to show you just what the, the office looks like up there. Um, I mean, I think the earliest that I was considering this for was not for next week's meeting, but for the, uh, March twenty-second. But again, I think it, it might be wise to push that off, uh, at, at least a little bit longer, if not to May, um, in order to, to make sure our ducks in a row, so. It just, I just wanted to have some cursory conversation about it. Any other concerns that haven't been shared? All right, thanks. Um, let's move on to our departmental reports. First, Police Chief Watson.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, the first thing I was gonna bring up was the tragic loss of life that happened last Wednesday. The loss of, uh, Megan Campbell and Lila Campbell to, to the homicide that occurred. It, it, it obviously is, uh, very hard to comprehend what happened there, and, uh, we're very grateful that the county police assisted us so rapidly in the investigation. Um, obviously, a lot of details have come out. Uh, I give credit to the, uh, first responders, the, the fire department, the EMS who originally called for a phantom chest pain call. And, uh, through their diligence, they, they found the apartment where, with the barricaded door where the two victims were, and immediately called us, and they found something that, uh, looked suspicious to them. So, uh, thanks to them, uh, I, I, I know, uh, quads, first responders do an excellent job, and, and they should deserve credit for what they did and immediately calling us.
That was firefighter, paramedic John Muncie. That's, that's who paid that determination and did that extra effort.
So, uh, I, I'd also like to commend the county police, obviously, they, they did a, uh, excellent job as they always do. Uh, they responded quickly, they did a very thorough investigation. Um, there was a lot of evidence that they had to process very quickly to, um, determine the, the actor, and I, I don't even want to say his name and give him credit for the, uh, the evil he did, so, uh, um, they did an excellent job, he was in custody by Saturday. Um, and, and that, again, they, they are very, uh, important to get these types of crimes solved, we wouldn't be able to do it without them with our small police force, so. Um, again, it's always tragic when these things happen in our community. It appears to be the result of some kind of domestic dispute. And, uh, in, in the research we did, we found that we were never called to that apartment that we're aware of for anything involving those individuals, so. Uh, that's all I have on that at this point, so. Very sorry for their, their family's loss, and we were working with them that day, they provided a lot of information. Yes, Wally?
I have a question, and this may be something for Mr. McTernan. Because, you know, my heart goes out to this family. And immediately, what I, what I want to do is, you know, send some type of condolences card or something. Can I do that as a member of council?
Certainly, as a private citizen, a, as well as a council person, you can certainly reach out and, uh, as, on a personal basis and express your concern to the family.
Chief, can you help me with that? Cause I, I would like for us to send a condolences card or something.
Uh, yeah, I can, I can discuss that with you tomorrow, if you want to give me a call, we can do something.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing I have tonight is wanted to let you aware that, you know, uh, Mr. Bachy was talking about our three part-timers, and unfortunately, Officer Guerrero, who's been with us, I, I think just about a year, has been hired full-time by the Forest Hills Police Department. Um, he, he's a very good officer, he's been a great asset, I'm very grateful that we had him, you know, for as long as we did. And, uh, I want to congratulate him in, in getting that position and, and, you know, achieving full-time status with, with that agency. He'll do very well there. So just to highlight, you know, we were talking about the lack of manpower. There were, there was a COG, a Turtle Creek COG test that was given. Um, it was for four departments and all the positions were full-time. And for, I think there was seven positions, full-time positions. They had three individuals sign up, and two of them took the test and, and finished the process for seven full-time jobs. So it just highlights what we're looking at, the lack of candidates for these positions. So, that, that's all I have for tonight.
Go ahead, Mr. Mizer.
Yeah, I just wanted to also say, you know, Chief, I appreciate you calling out the first responders, but I also want to thank you and, and the officers who were first on scene. Um, as I told you during Police Committee, you know, uh, you can be an officer for however long, but there's certain things that, uh, are never easy to see and never easy to come upon. And so, you know, thank you for the work you do, and, you know, I just want to let the public know that, you know, I did ask the chief and our borough manager to make sure that there are mental health resources available for our employees who may, you know, need them after, after an incident like last Wednesday, so thank you, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Mr. Price.
I will, I'll pass that along, so.
Mr. Price, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I also want to thank, uh, our first responders, both, uh, Chiefs Watson and Chief. They see awful things in this, in their jobs, and they save lives, uh, that the public isn't even aware of. And I'm just very grateful for their service. I think we've got two really stellar people here in our borough, and I'm grateful that we have them.
Thank you, I, I will take the time to commend the officers, and, and they did an excellent job, reacted very quickly. And the things they did helped preserve evidence that, that helped lead to these arrests. And that, that the officers did an excellent job, and I, I always thank them for the, the hard work they do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief Watson, um, for your service and, and the time, uh, for your report.
Thank you, sir.
Let's move on to Item B, Code and Fire Chief Wilhelm.
Um, first, I'd like to thank all of you and Chief Watson for acknowledging those efforts on our part. And, uh, again, like to give a shout out to firefighter, paramedic John Muncie. He just, he felt something wasn't right about the call, and instead of just clearing the call and coming back, he took that extra initiative and effort, which led to that gruesome discovery. And, um, thank you again for recognizing, many people don't realize all the things that we see. And that once we see them, we can never unsee them, and it affects us forever. And, um, I, I know in our department, we, we're very, um, forward-thinking and, and, and try to address everybody, uh, the employees when they encounter these things. And, and Chief Watson and I both have, um, critical incidents, stress the briefing, um, uh, resources available through various programs. And, and sometimes those are used, and, um, it's difficult, but unfortunately, it happens. We get to see the best of people and we get to see the worst. Uh, as far as the Fire and Code Report, um, we're just chugging along, trying to keep everything together. And, and moving forward, obviously, this is a busy time with us for the volunteer department's fundraiser, our first fish fry was today. I'm exhausted and I still stink like fish, I can't wait to get out of these clothes and in a shower. We, uh, we are, we, when we, um, moved to three full-timers, um, in December, uh, one of the fire marshals, uh, was promoted to a driver operator. And, uh, we'd released, um, and, and publicized, um, accepting applications for a, a fire marshal position. We're still operating without one, and each of the shift commanders of each shift, myself and Assistant Chief Volpe, are, are filling in and doing a lot of the occupancy inspections and other inspections like that. Um, I'd like to congratulate Assistant Chief Volpe, he just had the birth of his third child last week. Uh, third one in twenty-five months, God bless him. Um, but he's been off, so it's been a little hectic because we're all trying to pick up slack. Uh, I will be getting with the Fire Committee in, in, uh, in March after we, uh, get some applications in to review and, and start the interview process for that position. And, uh, we probably will have to hire, uh, another, uh, part-timer or two just so we can maintain our schedule, because we had some people that had left and, uh, others we promoted up to full-time. And I think that's really it at this point, the, the other agenda item, uh, was relevant for the emergency operations plan, and that's all I've got at this point.
Thanks, Chief Wilhelm. Any comments or questions for him?
The fish was excellent tonight, so thank, thank you for your, your smelly clothes and laboring all day on that.
You're welcome.
Chief Wilhelm, do you just want to remind the public what the schedule is? I mean, today was, uh, the only Wednesday for it.
Yes, and it's, it's every Friday, eleven AM to seven PM, um, now through Good Friday. And, um, you know, the, the, the proceeds benefit the Volunteer Fire Department, which basically covers the, uh, the mortgage on the fire station annually. That's why, that's why we do the fish fry, it pays for our fire station.
Great, and I, from experience, I would suggest call ahead.
Yes.
It's very busy.
This is, this is the slowest day of Lent today.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, which is about seventy-five percent of what we normally do on a Friday, so, yeah.
Great, well, thank you, thanks for all the work.
Can you also come down and just donate and not have to, uh, you know, just donate?
Sure, well, and yeah, the Volunteer Fire Department sends out fund drive letters to every resident, every resident in the community. And, um, they send out a second mailing if they don't receive a contribution, but also at any time, they can come down and make a contribution as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's, uh, keep going to the Public Works Department, uh, Mr. Di Ambrosio.
Good evening, uh, just to have a couple of things. We have started to install the new disabled parking, uh, signs. We have over two hundred, so we'll be working on that for the next several weeks. Um, potholes, I know we've had a lot of complaints about potholes. We are working on them, I have a crew out two times a week, weather permitting. So we are trying to get to as many as possible. And, uh, lastly, April twenty-second will be, uh, cleanup day. I know that sounds like a long time away, but it'll be here before you know it, so try and mark that in your calendar. Thanks.
Go ahead, Ms. Alfonso Wells.
Yes, I had a question. Do, do we own that side of the street on your, going down to Braddock towards, um, the Parkway? There's that one little section that has, that totally is messing with my car, it's on the left-hand side, when you're going down, it's right there at the light. Is that our side of the street? Just, is that our side of the street?
Going towards the Parkway?
Yeah, from, uh, yeah, so from the borough building going towards the Parkway on the, uh, as you go down Braddock, uh, just as you, uh, this is, as you get to the intersection, um, um, there, at the light, there is a huge, I'm not even sure if we can call it pothole or small swimming pool. But it has been there for a while, and although I am tempted to take a little dip on a warm day, um, I keep hitting that thing, and the only way you can avoid it is to be in the right-hand lane. But you know what traffic's like, so you're not gonna be in the right-hand lane.
What are you talking about?
It's on the way going down, on the right-hand side of the street, going down, it's, it's in the left lane. It's, it's right at the light.
What, which light though? It's, there's.
The light at the BP.
At the BP, the only thing we own there is the lane coming up the hill. Everything else.
Well, of course, because the Swissville side is smooth road, right? So do we need to contact Edgewood about that?
Yeah, we can, I can, I cannot call the manager, I can't get, I can't guarantee results.
No, of course, of course not, it's just been there for, you know, I figured it wasn't us. Cause, um, you know, we actually get our streets done, but, um, that has been there literally for, I don't know, a year or two. And it just never gets better, and it just keeps getting deeper and deeper. And, and I, I haven't seen any attempt on their end to even put a little bit of something in there to fill it for, you know, a couple of days, nothing, um, so that would be great. That, of course, is not us, but we can reach across the community and find help.
Go ahead, Mr. Mizer.
Uh, Mr. Di Ambro, I just wanted to confirm, street sweeping just, uh, starts in April, is that correct? First of April, okay.
Yeah, it'll be April.
Great, any other questions?
Is it legal to park on, um, facing the wrong way on the street?
Go on, though.
Uh, I'll answer that, I'll answer that, no, you cannot park. It, it is illegal to park contrary to flow of traffic, and we typically enforce that on the main streets. Because if we enforce it on the side streets, then, um, you would all have about five hundred phone calls in a day.
True, true, but if you ever get a chance between Manonahela and, um, and Braddock or Shoyer, and you see several cars parked in the wrong direction, which makes it difficult for the rest of us to park our cars. Be free to give them a warning, because it is getting on our last little nerves. Like, all the other neighbors are like, why are they parking that way all the time? A little warning, a little judge.
I will say that half the people in Swissville park contrary to the flow of traffic, so. Again, I, we, we, we have made it an effort to hit the main roads because they cost, caused the most danger to other drivers. But if we went and started enforcing that on the side streets, your phones would blow up from the phone calls, so. That's what I'll say about that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Di Ambrosio, for your report. Uh, let's move on to Item D, Borough Manager, Mr. Bachy.
Thanks, sir. First thing is, uh, as everyone's aware, we do have a vacancy on council. Um, as Ms., uh, Salisbury has resigned, we have set a deadline for applications of February twenty-eighth, Tuesday, February twenty-eighth at noon. And so they, they need to be emailed or mailed to me. G B A C H Y at swissvillborough.com is the email, or mailed to seventy-six hundred Evan Street and received by noon on Tuesday. There will be an interview process on Wednesday at, uh, six-thirty PM. Right now, we currently have it scheduled for, um, before the council meeting. And, uh, then council will, um, appoint at a later date. But anyone interested in being appointed to the vacant council seat needs to get their resume and, uh, letter of, of interest into me by, uh, Tuesday at noon. And those will be disseminated to council on Tuesday afternoon. And those will be disseminated to council on Tuesday afternoon.
Um. Hey Greg, before you continue, because I was going to bring this up in my report, I, can I just supplement?
Yeah.
Some of what you just said, uh, just the other scheduling things. I know I emailed council about this, but for the public as well is that we will be um, having those interviews on the first, next Wednesday, as, as Mr. Bachi said, we will be voting on that. We're moving our end of March meeting up a week to March twenty-second. Um, and I, we alluded to that earlier with this uh, conditional use hearing. Uh, but we're gonna, that's gonna be the meeting, we, we vote on it because we only have thirty days to fill the vacancy uh, effective of the uh, resignation letter that we received. And that's going to be like day twenty-nine or day thirty. So, that, that schedule change will be moving up a week. And the other schedule that I want to make sure is, is on your calendar is the following, not the following, two weeks later, when we would normally have our April legislative meeting is on Monday. Uh, Monday, April third is what we had published in the calendar. I know that's a little bit off of our normal schedule. Uh, we moved it there because of Passover. I want to make sure that that's on your calendar, that we are not meeting Wednesday, the fifth, but we are meeting Monday, the third of April. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bachi.
In January, council passed the um, um, humor, council formed a human relations commission as part of an ordinance they passed. And we do have advertised right now for members on that board. Uh, we are looking for five members to serve on that board to adjudicate um, cases of, of um, alleged discrimination and to hear the, hear the facts of the case and pass, you know, pass judgment on those. Um, that the deadline for applications to be appointed to the human relations commission is March thirty-first um, twenty-twenty-three, and we will interview uh, it probably at the end of April for those positions and maybe, and hopefully appointed in May. So uh, we have not received any applications as of yet. So please, if you're interested, um, please get your applications into us. The newsletter just went out um, this week. So, and there, that was one of the subjects of the newsletter, requesting those applications and setting that deadline of, of March thirty-first. So please, if you're interested in serving on that board, um, please get us your application uh, by March thirty-first. That's the only things I have for tonight.
Can we put some flyers or something in the library? And, and, and other public spaces throughout Swissville?
We can, we can, we can put them at the fire department, in the library. Um.
Okay.
Wilkins, uh, Wilkins Community Center. Um, you know, we could, we could certainly, certainly do that.
Okay. Thanks, Greg.
Well.
Any other questions or comments for Greg?
Um, could we get some and put it um, and, and put it, and, and put it on a poll?
Well, that's actually illegal.
Hmm.
That was one of the things we've been trying to keep this from people putting stuff on polls, so.
No, wait a minute. It's legal to do it as a community thing. I know we, I know we talked about that. Is illegal to put up that we buy houses sign, which is still up. Um, but.
We don't own the polls, so we can't post flyers on other people's polls.
Whose polls are they?
Risons and Duquesne lights.
I'm gonna have to talk to Verizon because I'm gonna be a poll girl. Get on that poll and put up some signs.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bachi. Um, President's Report, I was gonna comment about the process for filling a vacancy. Mr. Bachi covered that. Um, I did want to bring up, one of the things we talked about at our last meeting, or I guess it was last month's meeting, I don't remember exactly when we talked about it, but was um, whether or not we want to re-enable comments um, on social media. Uh, previously it was Facebook, now we are streaming on YouTube. Uh, we had a little bit of offline conversation about it. That's what I had requested. I don't know that we came to any uh, I mean, there, there are pros and cons to this. Um, I think the, the conventional wisdom uh, from local government, local government academy and others is to not. Uh, but there are, I, I think the, what it reveals is there is a need for some kind of feedback loop. So we're still investigating um, some different um, applications or other avenues to have that feedback loop uh, in lieu of comments. So if um, if someone, I, I said I was gonna bring something up today. We don't have much to talk, like to, to present. If people want to have a conversation and discussion about it, feel free to bring it up during new business. Um, otherwise, if you are willing to continue to kind of wait as we continue to examine this, um, you can um, feel free to let us continue to look into that. Yes, Miss Gales.
Yeah, yeah. I, I asked around too. You know, I asked some county council people and some other borough, you know, council folks, you know, like, is this, is that, you know, like a resource or a medium that they make available? And surprisingly, shockingly, it's not. Um, some, they allow com, they, they allow public comments to take place at the beginning of the meeting and they also circle back and they allow folks who didn't register at the beginning to make comments at the end as well. But surprisingly, every single person I asked, that's whether it's like a, a borough council, it's a county council, the response was oh, we don't even, that's not even something that's even set up at all to even give me any sort of, you know, resources or suggestions or other tools or mediums that we can possibly use so that our residents can, you know, engage or interact throughout the meeting versus at the beginning and at the end. So I guess we, we definitely got to continue to figure something out. And I, I think another huge part is it like what Bill said, the issue is that we're completely virtual. You know, some folks have gone back in, in person. And I'm sorry, as I was talking, a thought came to mind. I've been vi- visiting other council meetings. And one particular council meeting, I will say, I liked how they handled comments. So that comments can come about during the meeting. What they did was folks who wanted to actively participate, they had a way to actually join the Zoom meeting. So they would join the Zoom meeting. And then after each topic, they would say, you know, are there any sort of comments? And then there was a way for the facilitator, facilitator to then indicate that person as like a speaker. And then that person basically was speaking. I will say I did see that, but they had better technology than us. I mean, they definitely were like, they were, they were using some platforms similar to Zoom. But like their, even their streaming was being stored to a cloud. So it, they had a, a little bit better technology than us. I could tell Greg, you know, offline what borough that was and maybe he wants to reach out to that borough manager to see how can we get that technology? But they actually, they have their meetings in person, but they cast it virtually. So that folks, you know, who are not there physically can attend virtually. But that was, that really was a, a mechanism used so that people can make public comments throughout the meeting, basically. Versus, there still was no avenue for people, you know, to communicate with each other throughout. But it was a way for folks to attend a meeting virtually by allowing them access to the Zoom. That was an option. But everybody else, yeah, no, it was nothing.
Go ahead, Miss Alfonso Wells.
Yeah, I will just say that when we went to the government, um, I don't know, classes, so to speak. It, some of it has to do with legal issues in terms of what the borough would be responsible for when you start having some of these conversations because they are on the record a, and how they take place. Um, the other thing would probably be, you know, the timeliness. Um, I'm all for uh, feedback from uh, the public. I think that's important. Um, but there's a reason there are different structures in terms of how you do it. And there's a reason that um, it's usually at the beginning. And maybe you can let some people make a comment throughout or something like that. Um, but one of the things I personally don't like is I don't like it if people are having conversations with people on Facebook while we're trying to discuss something in a meeting because we don't all hear what's being said. And I think it's rude. And I, I, I don't appreciate, you know, trying to have a conversation with the people in front of me and everybody's having a conversation with people behind them. It, it doesn't make sense to me. And, and, and it's very hard to concentrate on issues that are in front of you. If everybody's having five separate conversations on the side in private because they're answering something on Facebook. Instead of look, looking at the people who are speaking and listening to what they're saying. Um, half the time our meetings go so long or, or did in the past because people are engaging online instead of talking to the people in front of them because they're trying to make a point that someone made online instead of making a point to the, or at least listening to what was just being said, right? So until people know how to act better and, and, you know, I, I don't know what to say, but if you, if you're having a conversation on the side, when, when everybody's having a conversation in the front, then there's something wrong with that. You, you have to be able to engage with the people that you're engaging with. And um, you know, it's, it's very distracting for those of us who aren't, I mean, I, I'm not sitting up there having fifteen conversations at once. You know, I tell my kids when I'm on the phone, hey, hold it. I'll talk to you when I'm off the phone. So I concentrate on the conversation that I'm in and not sitting up there. Oh, we'll put shoes on and do that, while I'm trying to have a conversation that's pretty serious. And, and I think that does a disservice to the public, but it also does disservice to the fellow people who are sitting here having a conversation in the room. And, and you're listening to everything else that's going online. Now that doesn't mean that they're not having valid points. But it is very unfair to sit there and split your attention and only get to hear a few people who are saying things online. Which, very fair. I enjoy listening to what people are saying, but when I'm in a meeting, you should be present. And you should be intentional and you should be paying attention to the people that are in front of you and not having a conversation with five people that are behind them. That's what I find problematic about it. I don't find it to be very peaceful and that, and I think it extends the meeting as someone's having an external or having an external argument or bringing up somebody else's point that wasn't part of the conversation. And you're like clueless as to where did that come from? Why are we, why did we jump there? Why are you so insistent that this point has to be made when, you know, we thought we had handled that three conversations ago? So that's what I find to be problematic about it.
Thanks for the comments, uh, Mr. Mizer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chris. I know we kind of hijacked your report, but the discussion's happening now. So,
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I know I, I spoke out in favor of the live commenting, but I, and, and I clarified this with Chris, you know, I, I do agree that distractions among council are, are not good and are not beneficial for keeping our meeting moving. Um, and so, you know, if there were some sort of live commenting mechanism reopened up, I think it should be strongly encouraged, if not mandated, that council is not viewing those during the meetings, that we are being present um, with the conversation that's happening. If we wish to go back after the meeting and view those comments, so be it. Um, but that during the meeting, our attention and our focus would be on what's going on here. Um, you know, I think for me, it's just uh, any, and, and I'm saying this as somebody who before I was on council, I was in those Facebook live chats. I think any venue that you can have that spurs community conversation is a good thing. Um, if now, and, and I'm saying that in, it's a good thing for the community. Now, if council is getting distracted by it, that's a negative thing for the council, but that's something we as council needs, need to work out. I, I don't think that we necessarily uh, restrict the public because council's getting distracted by a shiny thing over here that is taking their attention away from the meeting. So, you know, I, I'm all for looking at other platforms or whatever it may be. But I, you know, I just want to make it clear that my stance is giving the community space to discuss things freely, I think is a good thing. Um, but I do agree that it should not be something that is taking away um, from what council's doing in the meeting. So.
Um, I mean, I'll just add on to that, that I think, I, I mean, I think I completely agree with Mr. Mizer about the focus uh, and Miss Alfonso Wells for council members. I will say the other thing that does concern me, I mean, just in general, social media, it, it's a tool. Um, I think there are a lot of benefits to it, but there's a lot that shows how social media has uh, led us, I don't mean us as Swissville, but just generally the public into greater division. Um, whether it be echo chambers, whether it be the fact that communication um, is more than just words on a screen. Um, uh, not being able to see someone's facial expressions, et cetera. I mean, I, I've witnessed in some of those comments uh, on previous live meetings, I've witnessed in some, not even meetings, just posts that the borough has made, uh, residents and employees attacking each other verbally. Uh, and that's just not okay. And so i- i- in, in some sense, I think that is another concern that I have of um, commenting. Um, again, this is not everybody by any means, uh, but that there are times where uh, people, I think, lose their uh, heads a little bit, uh, aren't thinking perhaps uh, sober-mindedly and are lashing out in ways that are unhealthy uh, and unhelpful to the community that we are trying to build. So I, I do think that's another concern that I do have that is specific to the residence piece of this. Um, I will say that there are, um, you know, I don't know if I had sent this to you, Mr. Mizer, but I know I sent it to Greg. You know, there's an app that I was having, uh, Mr. Bachi look into called Slido, which is a little bit of a technological learning curve, but it's a, it's kind of like a, a, a crowdsourced feedback loop where through the meeting, if people have questions that they want to ask clarification or uh, you know, about that they can post and then people vote on, all right, this is like, raises it to kind of like a, a, a Reddit um, page would do. Uh, and then, you know, there's a point in time in the meeting where you kind of circle back and, and go back and, and say, okay, let's, let's address these top two or three questions that come about. Um, I think something like that might be helpful so that residents can, I mean, there is a little bit of inter- eh, eh, engagement. If one person asks a questions and four people say, yes, that's the same question I have, then that one gets kind of lifted a, a little bit. Um, a- and I, I think it provides opportunity for, again, feedback. Uh, because I think that's really what is important and necessary in this. So those are just some of my comments.
Yeah, and I'll just finish. Sorry. Uh, yeah, I, I, I think that sounds great. And, and I think any kind of tool like that, that can enhance community involvement while not taking away from the, I hate using this word, but the decorum of the, the council meeting. Um, but is accessible and, and is something the community can use as good. Because I will agree, uh, to Miss Scale's point, I, I reached out to County Councilwoman, uh, Hallam, Bethany Hallam and said, you know, do you guys allow any sort of live feedback? And she said, no, if you don't speak during public comment, your comments not, you know, entered into this, you know, so eh, that being said, just because that's the precedent, doesn't mean we can't as a, as a borough, think outside the box of ways to engage our community, but while still maintaining, you know, ordering our meetings. So, that's all.
Mr. Price, go ahead. You're muted right now. I don't know if you.
Sorry about that. That's twice tonight for me. Uh, I would defer to Mr. McTernan for the specifics, but there might be record retention issues that me, we might run afoul of if we are engaging in conversations with the public online at the same time that we are having a public meeting. Uh, so that's something we just have to be cautious about and uh, discuss with the solicitor before we make any uh, technological changes.
I, I agree with that. Uh, you want to make sure that, because once something is posted or something becomes part of your public dialogue, you, you don't have the right to erase it or ignore it. Uh, also too, there's certain, you know, immunity and things that council people have in the course of doing their job that don't uh, uh, apply to the general public. So if you're basically publishing uh, comments that could be defamatory or uh, have other legal consequences. You know, your insurance, your uh, your uh, uh, immunity as, as legislators under state law, it doesn't necessarily apply. So I think when you see um, so few people doing the live commentary, I think it's an indication that there are legal concerns. Um, but that's something that council has to weigh.
Mr. Alfonso Wells.
Yeah, I will also say that not only legal concerns, I, I would say that the platforms that we do have, I see Twitter, I see Reddit, I see Facebook. I see all of those platforms in which people just go off the rails and they go crazy and no one's nice, no one's kind. And we haven't figured that one out yet, right? People are still making very negative comments. And the trolls get on and they do all kinds of things. And I've seen people on council trying to have a nice conversation on Facebook or whatever, and it devolves. Um, and that's people who know each other and generally respect each other. So I would say that, you know, it, it's probably not, a- and look, I, I, I'll have a conversation with you face to face. Uh, and many people have seen me and talked to me and, but, but I think it, it serves a better purpose uh, not to have, you know, these anonymous ways of just, I mean, they're not necessarily anonymous. But people say whatever they want to say when they can't look you in the face and treat you like a human being. And I think that too many times that happens and we have to be very cautious. It's not just, I mean, we're not the first ones to say, yeah, let's open that, there's a reason um, why uh, some of that. Why some of that conversation that there's, there's a lot of issues with it, and I don't think any of that's solved. I still see people on Twitter saying very nasty and negative things. And the other thing is people respond so quickly. You you make a random comment and 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 just bam, you know, you're you're evil and 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 it's whatever, and you didn't even mean anything or know anything. And I mean, it's problematic because people snap so quickly on on that, and it's very, it's very difficult to respond. Which is why I stay off of those mediums because my mental health is is of utmost importance. And I can't sit there and listen to people's random comments. If you want to have, if you want to talk to me, please do. I'll talk for a long time, and those of you who know me know I do. I'll just walk by and takes me two hours to take the ten minute walk. Because I stopped and talked to two people and we just had a good old time, right? So I think that's something that really has to be seriously considered, and until people have better manners. You know, not really something that we want to get ourselves into. Just a little bit we have is 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 relatively contentious. But I I am all for letting people, particularly at the beginning of meetings. You know, just as in a regular meeting, everybody comes and and they have their their comments and and stuff. I just don't want to get distracted. I really do like having the conversations that we have without having like knowing that someone had three secret conversations. And that's why you're mad at me because somebody else was mad at what I said. You weren't. But they told you, oh, get her on this or say this about this. That to me is just, it's 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 not, it's not a good way to interact with people.
Well, thanks for the comments. I think that was a a a good and civil conversation that I wasn't expecting to have tonight, but that's okay. I think that I appreciate the feedback. I mean, with your permission, I'll continue to investigate this. I know Mr. Miser has expressed interest and I've I've included him. I've had a few conversations with him as well to, you know, not violate sunshine stuff. If others want to have conversations with me about it, I'm happy to have it, but I I do want to continue to explore something because I. What I kind of the two takeaways that I've heard is. The precedent. The the conventional wisdom is not to have. Kind of live commenting in other municipalities and other places, but at the same time. We were acknowledged and recognized that there, we need to have ways that residents can communicate with us, which we do with public comment, but maybe something beyond that, something that has. Feedback that is timely as opposed to, all right, you've got, you know, two opportunities a month to to speak publicly, and so we'll continue to investigate this. If you're okay with that and. Go from there. Does that seem reasonable? I see a thumbs up, some head nods. Okay, great. Thanks. Well, good. I'm glad we at least were able to have some discourse, some deliberation about that. The other things that I just wanted to say, let's see, we're going to be meeting as an executive session after this meeting. We have issues of personnel and the transfer of real estate. That we are going to have conversations with. And the last note is I just wanted to acknowledge the members of our community who are celebrating Ash Wednesday as they are reflecting on their mortality. That they would have a a that their Lenten sacrifices would be blessed in this time. And that's all I've got. Let's move to Solicitor, Mr. McTiernan.
I have one information item for council. I submitted my solicitor's letter to our bank today, and we should be receiving a tax anticipation. Funding in the very immediate future, so that problem is resolved for now, and that process is completed. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Moving to item seven, is there any other new business that needs to be discussed tonight? Yes, Miss Alfonso Wells.
Yes, apparently there is a meeting through Connect and the. I don't know, Transportation Improvement Seminar Series. I am not a hundred percent sure whether that's talking about E Vs or not. But it says it's a training workshop that will further equip Swissvale's municipal officials. With the knowledge and tools to foster transportation choices in your community. This workshop will include educational and scenario based learning exercises. As well as individualized assistance and take home materials to jumpstart the transportation improvement process in Swissvale. And so they're holding it on two dates and they encourage you to attend both dates. I cannot attend both dates. I I would encourage some other officials that are here tonight to also try to. To to attend whatever this conference is and, you know. I can't do it all, folks. This is a busy time for me. I am, I am, I I'm. I'm trying not to sink. I'm trying to keep my stroke steady and and to keep above water. But there are two meetings. One is on Thursday, March second. And the other is Wednesday, March twenty second. And the meeting on March second will be in the Millvale Community Center. I think it's going to be from four to eight P M, so quite a quite a session, and I think they'll feed you. So they will feed you for keeping you that long. And the second session is going to be in the Wilkins School Community Center on March twenty second. And I think that is also from four to eight. I'll try to get some more details to see exactly what we're being trained on or whatever. I just, I don't have the bandwidth to to do all of this, honestly.
Miss Alfonso Wells, actually, I've I've been in conversation with a community member about those seminars, and I am planning to. Try to attend at least the one that doesn't occur at the same time as our council meeting. So really, the only one, you know, that we would be, anybody would be able to attend would be that March second. Date, the the Wednesday one, we do have a council meeting that evening, so I I am looking to attend that.
I'm glad because I I I've done a lot of things with the with the with the with Connect. Which includes a fire committee, and then they have infrastructure committee, and we also have lead. And so that that has taken up, I mean, I had, I had like two or three meetings in in two days. So if if, you know, sharing. The 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 spotlight of of Connect would be wonderful. I encourage all of you to become connected to your community and to plug in. To connect and to get to know your fellow municipal officers and and to to just get to know some of the projects that are around. I can only dedicate a small portion of my of of my my very busy and daily life. To all of these different things. I am interested in a lot of these things. They are very, very important. But I I literally cannot do it by myself. So I'm so glad, Josh, that you were going to attend. I'll probably be at that meeting. I knew there was something. I was like, why are they having this? I told him I could attend one, but I definitely couldn't attend two. So I I do appreciate the fact that, and I've seen some of you, and I know, Chris, I saw you at a meeting. This week, and I I definitely was in a meeting with Chief Wilhelm and Chief Watson, separate meetings. But we were in meetings this week and last week. So anybody else who wants to contribute to those, you are more than welcome.
Can you send me a calendar invite?
Go ahead, Mr. Miser.
Yeah, I just real quick on our new business, wanted to thank any of the residents who reached out to. Pittsburgh Regional Transit regarding the P three extension. The proposed service cuts to the P three to Swissvale. I saw yesterday that it was announced that those, at least for now, those service cuts have been removed from the proposal. So thank you to our residents for reaching out, and obviously, we as council also. Reached out to to. Urge that those cuts would not be made. So we're obviously not completely in the clear. They could come back at any point, but. Thank you to those who reached out regarding that.
Thanks. Thanks for pointing that out. I did see, I think, maybe, did you post that on Facebook? Someone posted it somewhere, I saw. So that's great. Any other new business? Well, I'd love to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Sean, Miss Alfonso Wells seconded. All in favor? All any opposed? All right, motion adjourn or motion carries. We are adjourned nine oh three P M. Let's stop the recording and streaming and council stick around for our executive session, please.